Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 17th. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Jim Butler.
Let's pray. "Lords, we're gathered here this evening. We're very mindful of the many needs throughout our city. Lord, we ask that you teach us and help us to be kind, tolerant, and forgiving always, and working towards a common goal for the betterment of Burlington. Grant us the understanding, Lord, to approach all issues, openminding, and working to create solutions to achieve positive results for our community. Father, we ask that you touch those people involved in the tragic loss of life recently experienced, the families, the first responders, and community friends alike. Lord, grant them peace and mercy that be with them as the healing process begins. God, we ask that you give us guidance, knowledge, and wisdom from above, and bless our city. In your name we pray. Amen."
We have a number of recognitions this evening. I'm going to start out, we have some Boy Scouts with us, from Troop 51 and Troop 39, if y'all wouldn't mind standing. And y'all are working on communications, Mayor Patch?
Yes.
Excellent, welcome. We appreciate having y'all here. You're in good company with a couple Eagle Scouts up here. And then, next, we have some visiting visitors from our sister city in Soladad, Mexico. And I'm going to call on Ann Honeycutt, did they come up? Welcome.
I need to grow taller.
Feel free to do it.
For those of you who don't know, I'm Ann Honeycutt, from Burlington, Alamance, Sister Cities. And tonight Burlington, Alamance, Sister Cities is pleased to welcome four students, university students, a professor from a university, a member of -- he's not here. I started to say, a member of the Sister Cities Committee, and an artist from our sister city in Soladad, Graziano de Sanchez, my Spanish is horrible, in the state of San Luis Potocay in Mexico. We've been Sister Cities since 2004. Some of you will remember that. That was when Steve Ross was mayor. And tonight, the Sister Cities Committee, and an artist, and I would like to make a special presentation to the city of Burlington and to the County of Alamance, from our sister city in San Luis Potocay, Mexico. Herbie, will you come forward with us? Beverly, do we have pictures? Let me introduce to all of you the artist who is responsible for these pictures. This is Herbie Garcia. He is from our sister city in Mexico. And the reason this -- he's a muralist. And this is a gift from our sister city to Burlington. You will recognize the gentleman on the left, I think most of us will, as Sitting Bull. The gentleman on the right is Montezuma. And Herbie was very careful to remind me that Montezuma did not do selfies. And so, we don't know, we don't know exactly what he looked like, because cameras hadn't been invented yet. No iPhones. And as you look at this, and Herbie's relate -- well, you may explain the symbolism.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I can try, but usually very well. Because, okay, is the, yes. Well, I am Herbie. I am the artist. I was working every week for maybe seven days. So, I appreciate the opportunity, the Sister Cities, of Sister Cities, for stay here. It's very special for me. Thank you so much. Well, my painting is on process, noise, noise, noise finished, noise finished yet. It's a cross between the two cultures. We, our ancestors, it's a red skin with Azteca. Up here to the eagle, the American eagle, and the Mexican eagle, very represent for our countries. So, it's a landscape for Burlington. It's in the, in the red part, and the blue part, it's a landscape from Mexico. It's a, I trying represent the two cultures in this painting. So, it's all for, for right now, and thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Mayor, are you going to assist in giving, proceeding something to each of the people who's here?
Yes, we're going to ask all the council members to step forward.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Excellent. Council will join me in front of that.
Here you go.
Certificates, Ann, who am I reading the names?
I will. Okay. We have certificates for all of our guests from our sister city in Mexico. David Galvin Alvarez.
Thank you.
David is a representative from the Sister Cities Committee in Soladad. Manuel Cornell Ramirez. And we want everyone to stay up here, right?
Yes.
Manuel is a university student and studying software engineering, is that correct? At an engineering university. Herbie Garcia. Herbie is an artist. And the size of his painting is, I think you have ideas. It's on four canvases that are, are, altogether, it's 120 inches tall and 96 inches wide. Monica Castillo.
Yes.
And Monica is a university student. Aleju Idara? What was that? I know the name is terrible. He is industrial engineering at the university. Araceli Hernandez is a professor of English. These students have to take 10 semesters of English at their university in preparation for their engineering jobs. Daniela Malta. Daniela. I'm sorry, not Daniela. And she's also a university student in Soladad. So, please welcome these spokes to our city. Everyone, thank you. It's always picture. I'm going to move here.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see, we've got to scrunch up really tight. We're very, I'll scoot back here.
When you say he was working on this, he's being hosted by Alamance Arts in the Capitol White House, which I'm understanding he spent some very late nights in there.
And he's going about, I'm taking him about right now, because if you know much about painting, once he finishes painting, then he has to put a preservative on it, a amount of varnish on it to preserve it, and then we'll have it. And if you look at the decal, you will see the lines. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you off to all of our Sister Cities supporters. Thanks, all of our wonderful visitors.
Thank you.
For our next recognition, I'm going to call Jeff Parsons to tell us a little about Arbor Day. Tell us a little about Arbor Day and some of the events we've got going on, and then we'll do the proclamation.
Well, this is the, actually, the 26th time I've received Arbor Day proclamation from the mayor. We go back pretty far. I am the staff liaison, Jeff Parsons, with the Tree and Appearance Commission, and Arbor Day is part of what they do, so the city can remain a Tree City, USA. And this will be our 26th year in a row of being Tree City, USA. And if you look at the national statistics, we're pretty old as being a Tree City, USA, which I'm really proud of. We have planted many trees on Arbor Day, and you can, you can proclaim any day as Arbor Day. A lot of cities do it in the spring, but we have chosen to do Arbor Day on the same day as the Carousel Festival. And we like to think of it as we're allowing the Carousel Festival to happen on our Arbor Day. We get a big turnout like that. Years ago, years ago, we'd dig a big hole and drag a 200-pound tree over to the hole and get some council members, the mayor, and, and plant it, and water it, and sweat a lot, and then we'd leave, and that'd be the end of the Arbor Day proclamation and Arbor Day celebration. So, about five years ago, we got this grand idea. I'm also on the staff with the New Leaf Society, and as you know, the New Leaf Society has been very kind to the city. And I said, "What about if we do a tree giveaway? Let somebody else dig the holes and sweat and plant the trees, and we just give the trees away? Would New Leaf be interested in funding the trees for the tree giveaway?" And they said, "Sure." So, five years ago, we began giving away trees on Arbor Day, and picked a non-Carousel Festival day to do it. And we did not have very big turnout. Needless to say, we decided, "Well, how can we have a big turnout?" And we, the next year, we did it on Carousel Festival. And we give away two trees every half hour. We'll give away 60 trees this year. In the past, we've given away almost, close to 200 trees in the past Carousel Festivals. Last year, unfortunately, we got rained out, but this year, going back strong with the tree giveaway. We will be at the Ball Field Fence, at Ball Field Number One. We'll have a table set up and a tent, and every half hour for the duration of the Carousel Festival, we will be giving away trees. You simply pick a number, put it in a hat, keep your other number. Every half hour, we pull two. And you would not believe how happy and excited people are to win a tree. We'll be there to talk about trees, people have questions, and what's really fulfilling is when folks come back and tell us about their tree that they won years ago. So, come on out to the Carousel Festival. I want to thank you for everything you've done to support us.
Come on. Well, that being said, it is my honor to proclaim September 21st, 2019, as Arbor Day, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this day, which eventually became known as Arbor Day, was initially observed in the state of Nebraska with the planting of over a million trees, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas the important role of trees in our environmental system must not be taken for granted, trees can reduce topsoil erosion, produce heating and cooling costs, moderate ambient temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitats for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource from which numerous products are derived, such as paper, materials for the construction industry, and fuel for heating, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of beauty, joy, and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Ian Baltus, in the Burlington City Council hereby proclaim Saturday, September 21st, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Burlington. Furthermore, we urge residents of the city of Burlington to support efforts to protect our trees and preserve our woodlands for future generations. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you all.
At this time, we recognize Beverly Smith.
As the council, it's my responsibility, from my duty and duty to avoid cosmic interest, I have to bear any due consequences in mind. Thank you.
Before council is an add-on agenda, item D, North Park Pool Design Build Project. Do I hear a motion to approve this add-on item?
Aye. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has been approved. Before council now is the agenda with the addition. Do I hear a motion to adopt that agenda?
Move we adopt the addition, the agenda with the addition.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to recommend reappointment of Emily Connor to the Alamance County Library Committee, effective November 2nd, 2019, to October 31st, 2022. Item B, to approve budget amendment 2020-5, to allow animal services to use donations received to be used to support emergency shelter interventions for animals whose owners are experiencing homelessness in Alamance County. Item C, to approve budget amendment 2020-6, to allow Burlington Police Department to use allocations of RICO funds for the following projects: expansion of secure storage space in the evidence room, updated workspace in Drug Enforcement Unit, and contribution to Alamance countywide crime stoppers to assist in ongoing investigations. Item D, to award a contract between the city of Burlington and Miles McClellan Construction, Inc., for the construction of a pool deck shade pavilion and the renovation and expansion of existing bathhouse at North Park, and approve budget amendment 2020-7, North Park Pool Capital Project Ordinance to fund the project. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, is it possible that we pull item D and make that into a separate item for this conversation?
Thank you. Friendly amendment to...
For discussion.
Councilmember Ward, you requested that as to the consent agenda.
What, consent or move?
Would you be in favor of moving it as a separate?
Sure.
Item? Okay. Yeah, we'll take that as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of moving item D to a new business item, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed. So, consent agenda now includes items A, B, and C. Do I hear a motion to approve those items?
Move we approve the consent agenda, A, B, and C.
All those in favor, please aye. All those opposed? Consent agenda items A, B, and C have been approved. We have one public hearing this evening. A public hearing is being set to receive citizen comments to consider approving the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the Community Development Program year 2018 to 2019. At this time, we recognize Community Development Administrator, Sonia Granville. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comments on the 2018-19 CAPER, which is our year-end report. There are two main reports that are required by HUD. One is our Annual Action Plan, and the Annual Action Plan describes to HUD how we will actually spend our federal dollars for a fiscal year. And then, the CAPER, the one that we are here for the public hearing tonight, the CAPER is to describe to HUD how we spent our federal dollars for the preceding fiscal year. As noted in the summaries that you received in your agenda packets, we rehabbed six homes this past fiscal year. We provided down payment assistance through Habitat for Humanity to two new homeowners. We completed renovations to some public facilities, and we have others that we are going to start on in the next couple of months. We have funded the construction training program, where 18 individuals participated in the fall and the spring classes, with 10 of those individuals gaining jobs after the conclusion of the training. We also started public infrastructure improvement projects, such as the paving of Clay Court and Clay Street. Some of these projects, we did encounter some, some issues that kind of put us back a little bit. I think, for instance, like Clay Court, Clay Street, we had to wait for the utilities to be removed before we could pave. So, hopefully, paving will start on Clay Court, Clay Street in the next couple of months. We do have other public infrastructure projects that are lined up as well, such as Hall River Greenway, on the Stone Quarry Pathway. We also have the city park restrooms that will start, or should start, within this fiscal year. And then, we have other public infrastructure projects as well. And we also provided funds for public services to Allied Churches, Burlington Development Corporation, City Gate Dream Center, to the North Park Library, to Family Exchange Club, and to residential treatment services. I did want you to note in the project summary that was given to you in your agenda packet, on page two and three of the CAPER summary, that you do have a listing of all of the projects that were, that were listed in the Annual Action Plan for the preceding fiscal year, and the amount of funds that we expended for each of those projects this past fiscal year. So, in addition to those funds expended, and I do apologize, it is part of the full CAPER report that is on display down in the Planning Department, but I did not put in there the two figures, and I did this last year for the project summary at the city council meeting, but there are two additional figures of funds that were expended, particular to family abuse services and to residential treatment services. We did expend, we allocated one-third of the revenue from a special 5% surcharge on liquor sales to family abuse services and to residential treatment services. So, those figures are included in the full CAPER report, so I do apologize for not including that in the summary. Many of the projects that you'll see listed on page two and three of that summary are slightly under budget, and when I say slightly, I say within $500, just because we allot a certain amount to nonprofits within a given fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th. And unfortunately, sometimes they are not able to spend the complete total amount that they are allocated for that year. There was only one project that went significantly under budget, and that was the North Church Street sidewalk paving, which is actually a good thing, because that does mean that we are able to go back and reallocate those funds in the future. So, I will say that the city is doing a great job, but we also have the opportunity to do more with our CDBG and our home funds. So, we are at a really good place where we can do more things, and we have the opportunity to do new things, such as different homeownership opportunities to Burlington citizens, or to rehab assistance for landlords possibly, or to create financing options to attract new affordable housing developers. That has been a challenge for us in the recent years. So, I do hope to come back to council to discuss those new opportunities in the future with you all. So, at this time, I will take questions from council, and I will also yield to the mayor to open up the public hearing.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from council before we begin the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion from council to close the public hearing?
Aye. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Public hearing is now closed. Any questions or discussions from council? Or do I hear a motion? I'll mention, Sonia, you mentioned a couple of the program opportunities, including rental rehab assistance. And we chatted the other day about the lack of CHODOs and the capacity there for affordable housing construction. I'd be very interested for you to bring back more information on that, and for us to explore ways that we can continue to address housing affordability in the community, as well as council seeing demolitions and other issues with housing quality, and how we can bring that up throughout the community and address vacant lots where houses have been developed.
So, the items that were under budget, the remaining funds, how do we allocate those remaining funds towards another project? How would we handle that?
So, it's the same as any other amendment process, so we would have to go back and amend that fiscal year, which is 1819 fiscal year Annual Action Plan. So, there is a 30-day comment period that we do have to open up, and we advertise to the public so that they can make comments on that. So, once we decide what project to put those funds to, towards. And I will say, though, that we, and so, this will be an amendment that will come before you all in the next couple of months. We were trying to get through the CAPER process, so especially the funds that were the excess funds from the North Church Street sidewalk, I think that we are trying to put them towards another public infrastructure project.
Correct.
So, how much are you talking about?
That was roughly $20,000, I think, approximately $20,000, that it went under budget. And so, we are trying to put it towards, too, I think, the sharp road pedestrian crossing.
Other questions from council?
No, thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve the CAPER?
I move we approve the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the Community Development Program year 2018, 2019.
All those in favor of to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Per the earlier motion, we have one item of new business, now item D, the North Park Pool Design Build Contract. So, a staff member wants to just briefly touch on the design build. Thank you, Rachel.
Bear with me, I can pull this presentation back up. I think you have any questions you might have.
Council received a presentation on this last night at our work session, but we did, Councilmember Owen and Butler were unable to make it, so this is a good opportunity to review with them.
Jeff, I'm going to go ahead and run through this quickly.
Is that appropriate, Harold?
I really don't need to run through the whole process. I just got a couple of questions. Is this the first time the city's done design build?
Yes.
As I understand it, design build, the, if it's approved tonight, from this day going forward, conceptually, work could begin as early as the contract is signed by the contractor, because the contractor's already, is the lead person, and it's not the architect.
Yes. So, the, the design build process is actually an RFQ. You pick them based on qualifications, and they come with a builder, a designer, engineering firms. We had some pool suppliers as part of that group that pitched, and we selected them based on qualifications as a group. Miles McClellan Construction is the design builder, with whom we contracted for pre-construction services, and that we're asking for a contract for construction services. So, if council approves this, we'll, we'll engage them in the construction contract.
Now, was it other people asked to participate in this in terms of the fee or the bill that is, that Miles and McLendon has put forth? Did other people have an opportunity to, to be involved in this process? Other companies?
So, for the design build process, we did put out an RFQ, and that's how those are selected. So, a staff team brought in three different firms, interviewed them regarding their qualifications to do a public pool project with the scope of work. So, yes, we did.
The only other reason I thought we needed is to talk about this separately is that, and I'm in favor of this project, I'm not trying to derail it, but I think it's only fair to the public to realize we're moving $3.4 million. It, this is not a budgeted item, and it's $3.4 million that we're going to have to, $3.4 million, that's total figure up there, discounted, from reserves. Thank goodness we have reserves. But I feel like it's almost, it's, it's, it's only a fair that that item be discussed and be publicly stated, so no one can come back and say, "Well, was it in the budget?" No. Uh...
You pick them based on qualifications, and they come with a builder, a designer, engineering firms. We had some pool suppliers as part of that group that pitched, and we selected them based on qualifications as a group. Miles McClellan Construction is the design builder, with whom we contracted for pre-construction services, and that we're asking for a contract for construction services. So if council approves this, we'll, we'll engage them in the construction contract.
Now, was it other people asked to participate in this in terms of the fee or the bill that is, that Miles and McLendon has put forth? Did other people have an opportunity to, to be involved in this process? Other companies?
So for the design build process, we did put out an RFQ, and that's how those are selected. So a staff team brought in three different firms, interviewed them regarding their qualifications to do a public pool project with the scope of work. So yes, we did.
The only other reason I thought we needed to talk about this separately is that, and I'm, I'm in favor of this project, I'm not trying to derail it, but I think it's only fair to the public to realize we're moving $3.4 million. It, this is not a budgeted item, and it's $3.4 million that we're going to have to, $3.4 million, that's total figure up there. It's counted being moved from reserves, thank goodness we have reserves. But I, I feel like it's almost, it's, it's, it's only a fair that that item be discussed and be publicly stated, so no one can come back and say, well, was it in the budget? No. If you weren't at work session last night, you wouldn't know anything about it. So, and staff feels comfortable with this, they feel this, this comfortable with this company, and that meeting a timeline that's being proposed to go forward.
Yes, so as part of the RFQ process and every discussion we've had since council initiated the first contract in February, we've let them know about our timelines, and we've done a lot of work with them. The builder's been at the table with the architect throughout this whole process. So they took public input, staff feedback, and we have really had many in-person meetings, lots of over-the-phone and over email conversations as we've adjusted the design, the scope. What was nice with working with them is really they were able to cost estimate throughout the process. So if you've noticed, our bids have been coming in well over budget lately because of the construction market, and we got pretty close on this process through working with them along the way and having that accurate cost estimating. So I do feel very comfortable with them, especially in the last few weeks working through our contract. They're going to take care of us.
So, Mr. Huffman, then, in terms of this is approved tonight, in, in normal construction if this mattered, there's contracts that have to be reviewed by legal before literally work is, is started.
You've got it.
This one is here.
You've got it.
So there...
Rachel, do you want to flip to the slide with the two contracts?
So, but my point, though, is they're willing to start. Now, is there, is there a, a penalty? I, I don't, hopefully we haven't set a date this thing's going to be finished yet, because, you know, this is a roll of the dice, they're on a pool this time of the year, good weather, let's be honest.
Well, you have set a date.
Well, hopefully a date.
That's, well, that's, that's, that's been the driving force behind the, the use of design build, in the sense that the, the city wants it constructed and back up and running for next summer. And so that's, that really was the underlying purpose in going with the design build process, and that they have been very confident in saying that they will be able to meet that. There is a provision for, if they're a daily penalty clause, if they do not meet that date.
Liquidated damages.
My, my only concern about a pool was not, it's not like a, some other projects, is that you're talking about a foundation of concrete. We're talking about doing this in the fall of the year when it gets wet, the winter when it's really cold, and, I mean, I, I, hopefully they meet their schedule. But I mean, what I'm trying to say is, we need to make darn sure that it is done properly. If it's a month's too late, it's a month of too late. Because when you get into a pool, if there's a mistake, going back in and making that correction is a tremendous effort and a tremendous amount of money, just from someone who's worked over there for many years. So I'm not questioning the concept, I just want to make sure it's done right, because you don't want a do-over in this one.
And Rachel, this contract, this group of firms together doing the proposal has done a number of municipal pools.
Yes, yes, they've done municipal pool complexes in both North and South Carolina, which was a big factor in their selection.
But they're good with the amount of period of time we're talking about?
Yes, they've understood that all along and still feel confident. Obviously, they want to get moving as quickly as they can, but they understand that date and have not shied away from it.
That's all I got.
You know, to Harold's, to Harold's point, it, it is a non-budget item, as many things can be throughout the year, and I share his exact same heartburn over something that's not a budgeted item, that comes out of a, out of a fund balance, for sure. But, you know, I hope that we get this thing done and redo, I hope we have to do a redo, but I hope it's sixty years later, like this one. The, the reality of it is, we've spent a lot of money in North Park, and we've worked on many, many projects out there, and the pool is almost not usable. You know, if you really get down to it, that's the last piece in a pretty good gem of an area over there that we've spent a lot of time and energy and effort on it. And, you know, one of the conversations I've had with staff is just, some of the savings we're going to have in just maintenance costs alone, chemicals, because of the way we have to do this thing, it leaks, there's going to be lots of issues there. We're not going to quit asking for, or looking for grant opportunities to, to put towards this. We're not going to quit. I'm, I'm for one not afraid to, to ask our legislators to, hey, is there any monies out there that can, we, we've already had a little seed money help get this thing kicked off, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So I share Harold's exact same concerns about every inch of this, but, you know, every now and then, you just get boxed into an expense that you have to either absorb or eliminate the cause of it. And it's the absorption of this expense to keep that unit intact or eliminate it as an asset in that park. And I think it is in the best interest of the city to, to absorb it and, and keep that park in whole as it's always been. Very much, we're in the same boat with the carousel.
Yeah.
You know, the exact same boat. Things get old and things break, and they're expensive, and if they're the fabric of your community, then you need to take care of that fabric.
It's just, I, I, I think, I agree, the pool needs to be, this is a better facility, obviously, than what's there now, and has, is more used by, by different groups of people, ages and so forth, and opportunities. Unfortunately, from, from working on pools for many years, we've never been on time with one. Okay? And, and some of it is just things that you, you know, it's difficult, so...
Can't control the weather. It, it does help that the builder and the architect have been working together. A lot of times, there's some miscommunication there, so I think that that's, that's a hope for us.
Well, and also be careful when you tear something up, what you might find. So my, so I mean, my point is, obviously, it's the objective of this city to have that facility open come, you know, early June, but I think what I'll certainly will say right now, it needs to be done correctly, and it should be no issues when we take that pool. If it's a few weeks late, sometimes you have, just got to accept that and, and be with that. That's what happened at the Aquatic Center, I can assure you. It was a few months late. But, and we've made some changes in the minutes, so just, you know, I want to make sure people understand, and we're trying to the very best we can with this.
Other council questions are coming? I think one other important piece to note is that the city always looks at where we can make investments and how they drive the growth of the community, and we're seeing some, some really positive movement in new residential growth around the North Park area. And I think that's a direct reflection of the fact that we're investing in making that a high-quality place to live by creating amenities like this, reinvesting and doing our due diligence and our job of maintaining the assets that we've created over the history of the city. So this all falls into that responsibility. Do I hear a motion to approve both the contract between the City of Burlington and Miles McClellan Construction, as well as Budget Amendment 2020-7?
I make a motion that we award the contract between the City and Miles McClellan Construction for Budget Amendment 2020-7, North Park Pool.
Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion's been approved. Thank you, everyone.
Can I make one quick comment about the pool?
Sure.
I just want, want to make sure that everybody knows, even though Miles McClellan's out-of-town company, there'd be a lot of local companies working on this construction project. I've already been contacted by concrete companies, electrical companies, plumbing, and they're all local people that, that will be doing the work. So, you know, we're very happy that, that that's going to come to the, to the local contractors, and even though the company that's looking after it is an out-of-town company. Thank you.
And as, as was mentioned, this is the first time the city's engaging in a design build project, the purpose of which is to expedite the timeline and hopefully control costs in that current construction environment. We've seen many projects come in well above budget, and the city's had to step back from those projects and kind of reconfigure. So hopefully this puts a new tool in our toolbox and helps us continue to build new projects around the city more effectively and more responsibly for taxpayers. That concludes our regular business item. We have two folks who have signed up for public comment. They'll each have five minutes. I'm going to call forward Pastor Gene Kates first. Welcome, Pastor.
Hi, y'all. Good to see y'all, y'all. My reason being here, as you know, our traffic has gotten real bad on Trolinger. I about got, car came up on our sidewalk and about hit me the other day, came back off. We've had a real horrible accident in front of Trolinger Stretters, which left a, left a woman taken away by ambulance, and now they're using it for a drag strip. You'll see all the black marks all up and down the street. And the Brunton Police Department have been gratefully helpful, the, slowed it down just a little bit. The motorcycle cop comes and he sits right there under Robert's down store, and he don't have a chance to keep his hat off. He's always pulling, and the other day, we thought we were going to help him, because the man was going to get out of his car and argue with him about the speed limit. Well, the speed limit's 25, not 55, not 75, it's 25. And so we are still asking for more help there, and any help that we could get, because, believe it or not, I'm trying to make it a little better around here, just a little bit. But our sidewalks also, I have been called, been called four different places in the city this week, well, not this week, past week, from engineering to everybody. Our sidewalk's going up Plaid is about gone. Matter of fact, it's all part dirt part here, but I have an idea, and here's my idea. I have a lot of Elon College students now that come down and volunteer their time, and they, one of them's doing their internship there. And Elon is now doing a sidewalk made out of brick, which is engraved. As me and you spoke the other day at the drugstore, we're a little over halfway paying off our buildings. Once the buildings get paid for, then we're going to completely rock the whole building. All new windows are coming in, but the people who are going to grant me that for free will not do it until we're paid for. They will not do it right now, because in case we don't buy it, or something falls through, they want to do it for the owner now. Not, nothing against them, but they just don't want to do that. But we've been working with Jeff Wire, he's the one who plans the sidewalks up at the Elon, he's the one that did the crosswalks also. What our idea is, is to try to do a fundraiser, because we've got a mural going up on the building, is to show the, when, the old, back in the 30s, what it looked like around there. It's going to have the old North Park Street, where, where that used to be North Park, it's going to have the Daniel Boone statue, which used to be there, and it's going to have the fountain that used to be there, a picture of it, and all the old stores all across there. And what we're trying to do is do a dedication of each brick, and what that, what that money will go towards is to finish paying off our buildings, to help us continue to do the work we do. Just this year alone, with the Ugly Food Project that, you know, I'm part of strongly, we gave away, in June, we gave 16,000 pounds of potatoes away right on that corner. We gave 3,000, 5,000, 3,500 pounds of collard greens. Last week, we gave 6,000 pounds of watermelons that we had to go to Turner'sville and pick up and bring back. We gave away, now, individual, I understand this, and you saw them, 4,000 individual bananas that was going to be wasted, was given away. That's not including all the food that comes through there that we, being part of the Ugly Food Project. We want to make it look better around here. I'm not asking for the money, I'm just asking for, I got the help, I just need, who do I talk to, where to get some permission, and when can we start?
Andrew, is that something I can call up?
Mr. Kates, how you doing?
I'm doing good, sir.
Good. This is Todd Lambert here, the city engineer. Make sure he gets you his contact information before you leave tonight, and Todd will be the person to start with, and I'm sure he'd love to speak with you tonight and in the morning and get things rolling, so. Todd's department will get that rolling.
All right.
Todd, is, is, do we still do sidewalk studies in terms of which walk, which sidewalks in, in more need of repair?
Yeah, I mean, we, we constantly are, are looking at assessing sidewalks out the city and then prioritize those that public works for their funding on, on sidewalk repairs and maintenance each year.
Okay. Like I said, we, we, what we wanted to do is not put a sidewalk, we're going to put a brick walk.
So, yeah, so if I understand your request, I think what I hear you saying, you just need help with right-of-way issues, where the proper, where the line...
I don't, I don't want to start doing something, then I get in trouble.
Right-of-way issues, identifying property lines, also...
That, plus what the city's going, you know, because it's, it's kind of wide on Plaid Street going up, and it kind of narrows out. On the side of the building where we're going to put the mural at, we want to do the whole sidewalk all the way down to Plaid and Trolinger, not going any other way, but just on that side. Given more, because we have benches being donated to us, which is called Take a Bite Out of Crown. The benches are being donated to put all up and down Trolinger Street, and we're going to start that as well. And the business owners or whoever written the buildings are responsible for taking care of the benches, so they'll be put out as well. And then we have flowers and all that sort of stuff being donated, and different communities are going to come out and make it look better around here. But we don't want to start doing anything, tearing up something, and then we find out we can't do this.
So how many, how many, when are your feet being talked about, Pastor?
We got 2,000 bricks, is what's been said to the side, and so you looking, Mark, help me.
You're talking about the length of that?
What's the building?
It's about 64, 60. I'm trying to remember, because we measured it, it was like 100 and, first section was 60 feet, and I think it was a, a roughly a little more than 100 feet.
So square footage, how wide, six feet wide?
How tall, ma'am?
Huh?
It's approximately four, four and a half to five feet wide.
That's 500 square feet. I mean, my question is this, and maybe we've done this somewhere, are we going to go away from our basic concept of concrete sidewalks to go to brick sidewalks? And then, basically then, if that's put in, that's, we'd be the decision responsibility, correct? Or do we look at our budget and see the process of going in and putting in traditional sidewalks to these people?
So Harold's point, we, you know, that was a key thing, a, a, a part of the CAPER tonight, was the sidewalk piece. I mean, we've, we've talked about infrastructure, some of the things that we're doing. You know, we can work on a game plan to help them get what, what they need to make this done, and still stay within the confines of how the city manages its assets, and, and not getting too spread out, doing, everybody kind of doing their own thing.
And we want to work with you.
Absolutely.
That's just some of the things we're trying to do around Trolinger, we're just trying to change...
Y'all staying busy out there. Y'all are staying busy over there.
Yes, sir.
So if you'll stay until after the meeting, make sure you and Todd can talk and get started.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Next to our public comment is Mark Steinbach.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Pastor Gene's assistant, a member of the Westside Project. I'm responsible for mostly internet and marketing sales for the Hope Chest Thrift Store, as well as a designing member of the Westside Game Room. One of the things that, as a project of the, what, of the Westside Project has accomplished over the last several years, beginning with the Department of Justice and the Weed and Seed Program, is we have been able to clean up the neighborhood quite considerably. A lot of questionable businesses have closed down and moved on, and now much more reputable businesses have moved in and opened up. Just in the past 12 months, there have been four or five new businesses to open up there along that section of, of Trolinger Street, within the 300, 400 block of Trolinger. As that's happened, we've, in cleaning up the neighborhood, adding new streetlights that have come in, much brighter, the foot traffic has increased quite considerably. One of the things that we have noticed is people crossing back and forth between our facility, the building, or the business next door, back and forth to like Asher McAdams Drugs and all the others. And our biggest concern is the traffic. The speed through there has, you know, like I said, is only 25 miles per hour, but there have been so many close calls and so many near misses that the speed concerns us. I was a resident of the 600 block of Trolinger Street for quite a few, many years, and with the addition of the speed hump that was put in there, that greatly reduced the overall speed coming, coming through there. It was quite dangerous there at, once before, but it's slowed down. What our ideas and what we are proposing, since we have so many projects that go through, and we have so many people coming in and out with our Ugly Food Program to receive the food that we're giving away, that have coming in to get the donations or send donations, that are shopping in the area, the... that are shopping in the area, the residents that are now out walking the sidewalk, is the, to ask the council to consider, you know, putting those speed humps in throughout the other section of Trolinger Street to slow the traffic down. I know that, like I say, before the speed hump was put in on the 600 block of Trolinger, there was a study done and, like I say, the motorcycle officer sat there and did, he sat there, and I know he wrote quite a few tickets and, and checked quite a bit of speed. And I believe his reports come out very well. We have had in the past the electronic speed limit sign be hung on the street. And I could sit there and watch it and see people at 38, at 48 miles an hour. I think the fastest one that I saw was about 69 miles an hour through that section of Trolinger Street. So, and like I say, it's with the amount of, increased amount of foot traffic, since we have, you know, improved our neighborhood, we would just ask that, for any assistance we could get in possibly installing those speed humps to slow people down.
Thank you, Mark. Manager, is that something?
Thank you for your comments. I think what we'll do is, again, so Todd's a man of the hour this evening, we'll also have him. So we have a, a city policy on that that outlines the procedures that you would go through, getting a certain number of balls, getting signatures from folks along the roadway. You said speed humps, obviously, that's a very urbanized area, so we may also just take a look, are there some other things we can do to do traffic calming that may be more appropriate in that very urbanized area? And so, again, that's Todd and his team. He's got a team of folks here at the city that can help him with some various ideas. May include speed humps, but there may be other ideas, too. If we're talking strictly speed humps, there's a very regimented process of how you go through that.
Right. Anything that would assist us in helping to slow the vehicle traffic down. Like I say, the speed limit is posted at 25 miles per hour. And as you get on the upper end of Trolinger Street, the street narrows down quite a bit, especially with traffic, you know, parking on one side of the street. It is very narrow, and that's where there seem to be the most near misses, you know, with, with the intersections that are there and people trying to cross the street.
Pardon, if I could make a suggestion, maybe if Todd and Mike could get some data together and then maybe work through the Traffic Commission to kind of take a comprehensive look at what, you know, a lot of our boards and commissions do a lot of preliminary work on our behalf. And they're truly the expert in those particular categories, no different than PMZ and Planning and zoning than some of the others. If we could vet this through the Traffic Commission, get some good feedback from them on what maybe some solutions would be we can look for.
Okay?
That's good.
Mark was real trained, wasn't he?
Yeah. I learned from the best.
The intersection of Trolinger and Plaid is very unusual.
An offset, yeah.
It's a very unusual, if you keep it up, that's, back in 1932, there used to be a bar there where Plaid Street crosses Oakley. When Asher McAdams bought, Asher McAdams bought that building, he didn't like the bar being there, so he bought the bar and tore it down. And so made the road on Oakley. But what he did was, he made a road go like this, like this. So it's not your usual intersection.
Yeah, that is an odd traffic pattern through there, so. I appreciate any assistance you can give us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment. Do I hear any council comments?
I didn't know you had to sign up for public comment.
Is that permissible to council?
Sure.
All right. Ben, if you mind stepping in.
My name is Ben Onsbacher. I'm a member of Assistant Cities, and I want to thank you all for your support. I point out this flag over there from Mexico represents the sister city. I want to thank the mayor. He's our one example of actually having some economic development come out of the sister city relationship. But that's not what I wanted to talk about this evening. I wanted to congratulate you on the Recreation Department and Tony and I guess Harold. And I play tennis at the tennis courts I have for the last few years. And I just want to thank you for refurbishing those courts and compliment you on the condition that they've stayed in. They really look like new. There were a few cracks. Instead of just patching the cracks, the thing was all resurfaced. And I want you to know that we appreciate that, and that's a first-rate pass facility. Thank you.
All right, that concludes public comments. Any council comments?
Couple quick announcements, as you are probably aware, this coming weekend is Carousel Festival. We were hurricaneed out last year, so hopefully we have good weather for it this year. Staff has been busily preparing many different events. Our Carousel is out of commission, but don't worry, there'll be plenty of family-friendly events and kid-friendly events, so we're looking forward to that. And definitely make time in your schedule to come out for our headlining band this year. Love and Theft is performing at 8:00 PM under the trees. And we're looking forward to a wonderful performance. Should be our biggest music event of the year for us. Should be a lot of fun for everyone. Also, Phoenix Fourth Fridays, our Fourth Friday, last one of the year, is on September 27th. And we are running that in conjunction with Elon University. They conveniently schedule their family weekend that same weekend. And they are theming the event as Phoenix Fourth Friday, so we're expecting that to have the largest attendance we've ever had at a Fourth Friday in downtown. So definitely forward to more music, more food trucks, and more activities than you've ever seen at a Fourth Friday. And then Paramount has released their upcoming performance schedule, so some great things coming up. All the dog lovers will appreciate Cirque du Canine is coming out on October 25th. The Embers Beach Music Band will be there on December 27th. And Sons of Maestro, which does violin interpretations of classic reggae, will be there on February 8th. So all different types of performances, all in wonderful downtown Burlington.
Mayor, one thing, you know, the duck race each year, which is a great fundraiser...
For Meals on Wheels?
Meals on Wheels. We've got to get the creek back in condition, because the duck race moved to Twin Lakes this year on the pond, and the ducks sit there. There was no race, there was no...
It's slow as trash.
So, you know, you're needing a little current for the ducks, you know, so maybe we can get that back at the park in the creek, okay?
Any other council comments? Maybe we can move to Willowbrook from there.
So, that's right.
Looks like we have some students here.
Do we have some visiting students from AVSS or Elon? Or where are y'all from?
Williams.
Williams, excellent. Are you here for a class project?
Yes.
What class?
Civic.
Fantastic. Well, welcome to City Hall.
Congratulations.
Some of them are somebody's daughters.
Ah, there's a little extra pressure there. If you all want to stick around, I'm sure someone would be happy to give you an extra tour of City Hall if you'd like. Yeah, are y'all also visiting? From Williams as well?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Welcome. All right. Anything else, or do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? All opposed? Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening.